The actual standard for pollution states the proposed activity shall not result in water or air pollution. In making this determination, the planning board shall at a minimum consider. And there is a list of issues, the elevation of the land above sea level and its relation to floodplains, the nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal, the slope of the land and its effect on effluents, including phosphorus transport, and finally, the applicable state and town health, air and water resource and well drills and regulations. So the finding that we have is that there was no evidence with regard to activities that would cause pollution, and we found that standard to be met. Is there any comment or discussion around that?
Oh, this is Jack. I'm wondering if it would be more efficient just to focus on the ones where there might be an issue. Good to discuss this last time.
Well, I'm not sure where there might be an issue, but we can move through that more quickly if that's what you're asking for.
A little bit.
Waste water disposal.
I think, did we do water bodies?
No, I'm sorry. I skipped right over it. Water bodies, 13.
Well, you won't be efficient.
So Dawn, this is the other one that you were looking at, correct? And, you know, previously, we had talked about activity within the required setbacks of mill stream and and the wetland. And so this would be mill stream that we would be looking at specifically.
Yeah, my preference would be to change this to not met for the same reasons as under the well and section above.
I would agree with that.
You would agree? Okay. Okay, so can we pull that language from above?
It's the reasonable certainty. Language greater inverse greater.
That went into.
Yep.
Seven. Yep. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Does that look right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Water bodies, wastewater disposal. I don't think we had any additional discussion about that. Anyone have any questions or comments on that one? Stormwater provision. Since we did not have specific plans for parking areas, they certainly didn't include any consideration of stormwater. So this is one that we had found previously was not met. Any comment on 15? Number 16 is sufficient water, and it strikes me that some of the language from finding eight most appropriately fits here, the comment by the well driller and so forth. That gets directly to the standard. So that was.
I mean, the word, Kristin, the word any scale, I mean, I'm not sure if any. Wouldn't use the word any. Yep.
Okay, others comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right. 17, traffic. I don't think there was any debate about that. We had extensive discussions about about traffic. The sidewalk, pedestrian access, pedestrian hazards. Any further comment on 17? Legal access, pretty straightforward standard we found was met. Number 19, there were no impacts on adjoining municipalities. Therefore, the standard is not applicable. Life and fire safety. This gets back to the fire chief's comment and recommendations, which were discussed a bit in one of the previous sections. Kristin, I have a question for you in terms of the wording. Is there a legal distinction in your mind between is not met and cannot be met?
No, there's not.
Could we make it consistent then and just put is not met?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of the recommendations can't be met, but as a result of that, the standard is not.
Yeah, right, right.
So I think what I'll do is remove this underline.
So, and and the criterion is not met, correct? Yeah. Okay, no pending violations of the property. Timber harvesting is not applicable, and the proposal does not include road construction. So any other comments on any of these? Paragraphs 1 through 23, anyone? Leah, I would turn to you and ask if you have anything specifically on 1323 in this paragraph that you would like to comment on. This is C 1 through 23.
No, I do not want to make a comment.
All right, no comments from the applicant, and so I would look for a motion.
You know, hold on one second because I just realized that we have conclusions for A and B, but we don't have a conclusion for C.
For
to see how in B I have the conclusion here at the end. I don't think I have something.
At the end. Well, that one, there was a single conclusion to be made because it was a single standard. And I thought that we made separate conclusions on each of these standards, 1 through 23, at the end of each of those.
Okay, that's fine. That's great.
Okay, so is there a motion on paragraph C, 5C?
This is Jack. I'll make a motion that the paragraph C 1 through 23 as amended are okay, are approvable.
Are accepted?
Accepted.
Second.
My motion is second. Further discussion? Call for vote, Jack?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bill Buck?
Yes.
Bill Godfrey?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, the final section D. These are the applicable criteria from Article 8, Article 8 being the performance standards in the land use ordinance. So our discussion had been around several of those that had applicability to this, to this application. The first being the performance standard concerning lighting. And there was no information presented concerning a lighting plan for either the, you know, the building or the parking area. And the conclusion therefore was that the criterion was not met because there was no information or discussion around this subject. Any comment on that one? Section.
One second, Paula. I think when you and I were talking, you mentioned that there had been some discussion about lighting and safety. So I just want to make sure the board feels that second section or a second sentence is accurate.
I recall there was some discussion about lights on the beginning of the trail and maybe some lighting outside the building, but I don't remember exactly.
There was no plan submitted, so it would be impossible for us to evaluate whether or not it would be adequate.
Yeah, Jack, my recollection of what you just mentioned was that I think that the applicant in discussion, there may have been some mention of outdoor lighting near the trail, but I don't know that we got into that in detail as a board. I don't recall that we did.
No, we didn't.
Anyone else on the lighting question?
But that, I was just answering Kristin's comment about there's no discussion of off-site. Oh, there was no discussion of whether how the off-site parking would be lighted for safety. That's true. There was no discussion of that, sorry.
Okay.
Just that perhaps we should take out the word specific because it sounds like there wasn't a lighting plan at all, not even verbally discussed.
Anyone? Yeah, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. It suggests that there wasn't a specific lighting plan. But that, and that lets you believe that there might have been some other lighting plan or some other conversation around lighting. Others, are you comfortable taking that word out?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant presented no lighting plan to demonstrate. Okay. Section 16. This had to do with, this performance standard is about where solid waste generated by the project would be stored. And it requires that it be shielded from public view. There really was no information provided on this performance standard. And as I recall, Jack, you had some thoughts about this one.
Yeah, I mean, we don't ask for it as part of the application. We didn't ask that they show it on the site plan. We never discussed it. So I feel a little uneasy about saying that it wasn't met when we never discussed it at all. So I just leave it out. Because I mean, it's easily answered. They could say we put it behind the building.
Why don't you ask them right now?
Okay, I mean, Leah, was there any decision by the group about where they would put the dumpster or whatever?
We would build a shelter for it.
So it would be hidden from view?
Yes.
So Kristin, are you suggesting on that basis that we change this to the standard being met?
I would say so if the board finds that to be reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Others on this? Okay.
All right with me.
I'm fine with me as well. 17, on concerns. Parking areas. And we had determined that this particular section was not met because we did not receive a legible plan for parking that was in conformance with the requirements of the ordinance, basically. There are a number of parking standards. They were not met. Any thoughts about this piece?
Are there a rise?
Yeah, I park it. I had him park it right up next to the railing and for another hundred bucks, he's going to move it across.
I think someone needs to mute. I'm not sure who's speaking, but please, please mute your. Voice.
We have audio from Jeffrey Mador.
No, that's me.
Okay, we have audio from no one else now.
They just muted. I saw them mute.
Okay.
Mr. Smith.
So any comments on the parking section?
I would like to say that we this might be more relevant to a previous parking statement from before. I just, I didn't realize that at this point I could say things that like I just said about the trash, like I could say, oh, we'll cover it. I didn't really.
You know, that really isn't the stage that we are in, in the discussion, and it really isn't an opportunity to go back and revisit all of the standards that were found not to be met. I think parking is one that clearly was not met. There was not a legible plan that was in conformance with the, with the standards of the ordinance and that, you know, that is a fact. We simply did not have that, and I don't think that we could go anywhere else with the conclusion besides not met.
Okay, so this, so it's not, so right now is not a place where, when you ask me if I have a comment, I can't say something like we plan to remove those 19 spaces that were on the property.
Um, no, we're not really at a point where, where we can get into altering, you know, revising the proposal that you have in front of us and making, making revisions to the application. I think we have the material in front of us that we have. This number 16 was a minor addition. It's a minor standard. You know, we allowed that in, but I don't think that we can get into major revisions of the parking proposal.
To clarify is, you know, there was no discussion about the solid waste, and there was not an opportunity in the application to elaborate on that. And so that's why the board made an exception there. But parking certainly was discussed in great detail, and I agree, you know, we can't modify the application midway through the deliberation process.
Okay, that's my thought. I just was confused when I was able to do it a minute ago. I thought, oh, no, I have been doing that all along. So, okay, thanks.
No. Um. So Planning Board members, any comment on section 19 at all? This is the parking piece. And if not, I would go back to you, Leah, if there was anything else in this section that, that you had a comment on, inaccuracies or any issues that you identified.
No.
Okay. So I would invite a motion on section 5D, Article 8 criteria.
So Paula, it looked like you didn't really cover 18 and 19. That was, the parking was 17.
Well, I'm sorry. My pages are messing up on my screen here. There is an 18. Thank you, Dawn. Um. Okay, 18. Not applicable, no driveway construction, et cetera. And 19, resource protection standards. And this again gets back to the fact that the proposed parking area extends into the resource protection district. This is discussion that appears in a slightly different way earlier in the, in the document, but the conclusion is the same.
And you see, I've added the associated wetland there for consistency.
So any comment on 18, 19? If not, Leah, I'll go back to you because I had omitted 18 and 19. Is there anything in either of those that you'd like to comment on?
No, thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for a motion on section 5D, the Article 8 criteria.
I'll move that we accept the language in 5D as amended this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call for vote, Jack?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill Buck?
Yes.
Bill Godfrey?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay. So at this point, we've been through the entire document. We voted on each of the findings and the conclusions, and we are at a decision point. And so I believe, unless Kristin, you have anything further on this piece before we move to a decision?
I do not.
Okay, so you know, as we've discussed, there are a number of criteria that have not been met, and I would look for a motion on the application itself.
And this is Jack, and I can make a motion about will we have a discussion after I make the motion?
Yes, yes, definitely. We'll have a discussion.
So I'll make a motion to deny the application.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny the application. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I think it's important for everyone to have an opportunity to, to speak to the motion before we take a final vote. To, you know, give an indication of your position and the, you know, the reasoning behind your decision and how you anticipate you will vote. As we all know, this has been a very complicated, contentious, and in several respects, an important application that we've been, we've been considering. So I do think it's important for each planning board member to weigh in and share your thoughts about this before we take the final vote. So I'm I can start to begin this, this part of the discussion. You know, I can, I can summarize for you my thoughts. I will be voting to deny the application on all of the reasons that we've talked about tonight. I think the ways in which this application has not met the applicable standards, I think they're all important. I do think that one of the pieces that's especially critical in this decision is the concern around the uncertainties that are associated with the application. Because we do not know, we, there is very little information. We're not able to understand clearly what activities are being proposed, how many people would be involved. And that leads to many uncertainties with regard to impacts from traffic, parking noise, and the more indirect impacts to to water bodies that were outlined tonight. I think the situation in general causes us as a board not to be able to measure and evaluate the potential impacts of the proposal. And I do think that of particular importance in this list of standards is the standard in the ordinance that requires that a change of use of a non-conforming structure will not have a greater adverse impact than the existing use. That particular standard to me is, is very clear, and it is very clear to me that the proposed use would have a greater impact. So that's a very broad summary, but again, I will be voting to deny the application for those and, and a number of other reasons.
I'm happy to go next. I, I first want to say that I think the, the idea of a safe space meeting house is a terrific idea. I, but I do not believe that this is an appropriate location for, for all the reasons that we've discussed this evening. And the single most the single reason that, that bothers me the most is the adverse impact, the change of use and the, and the impact it will have on the surrounding areas and the people who, and the adjoining properties and properties in the area. So for that reason, I will also be voting to deny the application.
Thank you, Bill.
This is, this is Jack. Should I go next?
Yes, please.
I agree with everything that's been said and I, I appreciate the applicant's mission. And I hope that in some way that they succeed at doing it, but it just needs to be at a different location. This is not the right spot for this sort of activity. And if I were living in particularly the Cody's house, it would be terrible. And I, whenever I look at these applications, I think to myself, would I, how would I feel if this was next door to me? And having the parking lot on one side, people traipsing in front of my house all, you know, during the night. And then going to this venue and noise emanating from that, either from outside activities or indoor activities. It's just, it's, it's just not what anyone who moved to a rural area, rural residential area would anticipate having right next door to them. So I'll be voting no.
Hi there, I'll go next. I'll be voting to deny as well for all of the reasons stated in the written decision. And I echo everything that's been said by my colleagues here. I too am particularly concerned about the adverse impacts, traffic noise, how, how it fits in or doesn't, is the more apt phrase to the character of this particular area. That all being said, I completely agree that your mission is the good one. And I hope that there's somewhere in our community where it fits, but it, it doesn't fit in this particular place.
Thank you, Jan.
I can go. I too will be voting to deny the application for all the reasons have been stated. I wish Leah and Alex well. I think this is a really great cause. Again, just not the right place in town. But I also would like to add that, you know, this is the reason, the reason we have land use ordinance, the reason we're doing such a thorough process is, you know, all, all property owners in our community have rights, land rights. And our job is to apply the rules that have been voted on by the community to fairly across all applications. And I feel like that's the purpose of this process and I feel like we've done that very carefully here and really considered all the components to the best of our ability with the information that we've received. And so I don't want people to feel like this was a an emotional decision in any way. It's a very methodical and carefully applied decision. And I think that's really important to recognize that this is not an emotional response.
Thank you, Henry. Bill Buck?
I think that the idea of the project that they wish to proceed with is something every community needs. But it just doesn't fit this time for us in this place.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I think I'm it, so.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
Yes, and I will also agree with everything that's been said before. I find that this is a, a great idea. I, I applaud the, the intent of the safe space meeting house. But again, as others have said, there's just too much that's not being met. I mean, I know we've sometimes looked to try to do conditional approvals, but as we go down this list, there's just too many things here that that cannot be met in my mind in this location. So I also will be voting to deny.
Thank you, Don. Before, before we get to the, the vote, you know, I would, I would like to just add that although I didn't say it, when I made my comment about how I was going to vote, I would also like to add my voice to all of those who said that they certainly support the mission of SSMH. And it is, is certainly a, an important mission and, and one that I think has the support of all the planning board members. But again, as others before me said, it, it just doesn't fit in this particular location. And we cannot find that it conforms to the ordinance. And I would like to reiterate the point that Henry made about the board's obligation. We do in fact have an obligation to make decisions that protect all property owners in the town. And the zoning ordinance is in place with that in mind. And part of the planning board's obligation is to make sure that that is administered in a way that provides those protections that property owners expect. So I think that's a particularly point, important point that Henry made that bears, that bears repeating. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny the application. And I will call for a vote. Jack?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill Buck?
Yes.
Will Godfrey?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Thank you all. And thank you, Leah, for your participation, your patience with this process. I know it must be a disappointment, but again, you know, understand that as you heard tonight, you do have the support of the planning board for your mission and we wish you the best of luck moving forward. So I
I think we need one more vote, which would be to authorize Paula to sign the findings of fact as amended here and approved tonight.
So move, so move, second.
Move, second discussion. I'll take a vote, Jack?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill Buck?
Yes.
Will Godfrey?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
All right, I will send you this document, Paula, as soon as we finish and handle that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Kristen.
Welcome.
For your assistance. We appreciate it.
You've done a great job, everyone.
As have you, Kristen. Thank you. Paula, I'm gonna have to excuse myself at this point.
I, I think we're, I think we're finished because I'm, I'm I'm going to propose that we put those sets of minutes on the agenda. We do have a meeting next week on the ninth for a single application. And I'm going to propose that we do get caught up on the minutes. I had a number of moments that I wanted to provide electronically on those previous sets. So we'll have those and we'll have the ones that Kristen just sent out today. And we will wrap those up at the next meeting. Okay, anyone else, anything else, any issues, comments before we adjourn? Okay, thank you all very much. We're adjourned and we'll see you next week. I'll ask Chip to send out a reminder, but we do have a meeting on the ninth.
Thanks, bye everyone.
Good night.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chip. Good night.
Night.